Will you make the motion on the consent agenda as soon as we're on the air?
Anybody wanting to pull one?
What's that?
Pulling anything off there?
Yeah, I have something to pull.
What one?
A, C, E, and F.
Is it A, B isn't Baker?
A, C, E, echo Freddie. And they're very brief, by the way.
As soon as I can, I'll make one.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are back in session. Margaret, would you like to make a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Do you want me to wait until after we hear discussion?
Oh, let's wait until after the discussion, but we're going to start the conversation on the consent agenda. Mr. Senior has indicated he'd like to talk about item A, the approval of the minutes. Mr. Senior, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Page forty-five, please, of the meeting book.
Okay.
The voice vote, the first box is issued. The flag football was a twelve-month contract, not six. And that's reflected on page fifty-three of the agenda and the contract section. In fact, page fifty-three needs remending, Scott. If you look at that, please. The flag football, you've denoted it as Sherman Soccer. Is that correct? And it's twelve months? But the minutes on page forty-five reflects six months. I think the minutes are wrong. I don't think they reflect what the board agreed.
I think you're correct. Senior, it's to the flag football, and six months as to the other, and financials for both.
It's just a typo, I just wanted to bring it up.
Soccer, six, flag, twelve.
Yeah, the minutes don't reflect that.
No, the other way around. Flag was twelve.
Flag, twelve.
Yes.
In soccer, six.
That's what the board approved.
You got all of that, Scott and Diane or whoever's making?
Yes.
Okay, please continue.
Four C.
Four C is the contract spreadsheet.
Page fifty-two, please, of the agenda. Burger, Tooms, and Elam Gaines and Frack, second company down. I can't remember agreeing to three different numbers for years one, two, and three because page sixty-two of the agenda just sets out a number of seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five only. I can't remember approving nineteen seven fifty and twenty thousand five hundred. Where did that come from?
I'm lost, I'm sorry.
Okay, page fifty-two. Page fifty-two.
Page fifty-two.
We agreed to hire a diagnostic consultant at seventeen nine seventy-five, but I can't remember agreeing to those figures for the second and third years.
That was what was in their proposal, and those are at our discretion as to whether we continue for the second and third year.
It does say in their proposal here that it is at our discretion, but I didn't find those numbers in their proposal.
Oh, they're there.
Are they? Okay, I looked again, my mistake, but I couldn't find them.
And it could just be a typo in there, because there was at least one proposal that had three different, you know, each year it was a different price.
Yeah.
Several of them had the same price, that would be all wrong.
Sexton and Schnell had three different figures, but Elam Gaines had just had one figure in the first year.
Well, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong.
You're thinking of that? They don't have three numbers.
What was their one-year number?
Seventeen nine seventy-five.
Then it's probably the same for year two and three.
But that's not what page fifty-two reflects.
Right. Will you?
Well, okay, so I'm seeing that they just, they have one, two, and three, and the others have three-year terms, and so they just gave a sixty, okay, so theirs is coming up to around fifty-some thousand if you add them all together, and the others are sixty-five thousand and above.
We have to go to the last month, last meeting.
Okay.
With the summaries.
Have you got that?
I can look at it.
Yeah, please take a look at that. That's last meetings. That's what we've already done.
That's the summary we had. Let's see, Burger Tooms. Yeah, so it would be the seventeen nine seventy-five for three years.
But that's not what page?
Right. So we'll have to change that in that tracking form.
Where did these numbers come from for years two and three?
Before you do that, look at the proposal, not just this sheet. This sheet could possibly be wrong. Are you with me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I get the point, anyway.
Because they may have added it up at the end.
Thank you.
Burger Tooms usually doesn't put a, they keep it the same as long as you keep them.
Yeah, we used to have Gaines, and that's how we used to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're on page fifty-two, I would like to make one minor little comment.
Please.
And that is, no offense to Tony, but in March, we have our three-year of legal services to look at, the new contract, so I just want to bring that to everybody's attention so that we're not scrambling at the last minute in March to take care of this contract.
Thank you. Mr. Senior?
Yes, four C, please. Page fifty-seven of the agenda. Cal, Scott, either of, I just want to have this brief discussion. On the Aquagenics contract of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar there, page fifty-seven?
The same document.
Page fifty-seven of the meeting book. Are we there? I'm there. Okay. Page fifty-seven, hundred and forty-seven thousand. This Aquagenics contract terminates in September next year. Just remind me, because we're going, we've just adopted some pond standards we're going to have to absorb, they'll reflect it in probably a rebid or some changes to that. Are we, where's the flex, have we got the flexibility to terminate, for example, at the worst case without cause and rebid? Have we got the flexibility to amend this in the light of these new standards that we're going to try and adopt? How fixed are we in this contract with Aquagenics?
No, you've got flexibility. If the conditions have changed, you can try and renegotiate with them for those changes, but you still have, you know, termination with thirty days notice without cause.
That's correct, gentlemen, that's typically.
Yeah, okay, so.
But any amendment would require the mutual agreement of the parties to amend.
Right.
It's appropriate, but if the board wants to terminate and solicit additional proposals based upon new standards.
Is the nature of the relationship such that we will have some goodwill there to make these changes and adopt a new direction based on these standards? Or is Aquagenics good to deal with like that?
They have been in the past.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Just hold on just one second on that. Mr. Manager, don't you think it would be wise to transmit to Aquagenics our new pond standards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four E. Four E. Scott, thank you for this irrigation. Page, this irrigation log on page sixty-three of the meeting book. On page sixty-three of the meeting book, it shows that the Services District as well as Mainscape have been making checks, but it looks like Mainscape dropped off at the end of September doing checks, and there's only the district.
No, I believe on page sixty-three on the bottom, their last inspection was twelve seven, at the bottom below the photographs.
Okay.
Right where the cursor is.
Okay, okay, the dates I understand now, okay. My request would be this. I just want to, these trees have been there now since, what was it, August? When did we first, August?
July.
And we've had a fantastic success rate of a hundred percent, and I think the O'Donnell landscaping deal goes on for six months. That comes up in what, February?
February, I believe.
Yeah, they're responsible until then. And I just want to make sure that these are not just sort of drive-by inspections saying it looks okay. Do you think you or the district or Mainscape could just add some reassuring words here to say they've checked all trees, they've checked the irrigation on all the trees, rather than just saying it looks good? Are they actually checking every tree, or is it just kind of a drive-by?
It could be both. I think the, I think there's some boots on the ground, so to speak.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't tell you.
I don't want to be a pain here, but there's ninety-five thousand dollars with the trees there, and there's a, you know, we've done a good job with it, and I just don't want them to start dying through the dry season.
We'll take care of it.
Thanks.
Mr. Senior, you read, of course, that it says soil is moist. I took that to mean that somebody flicking his finger in the soil and determining that it's moist. Am I wrong about that?
It's not my finger.
Yes, Bill.
I don't know, I have to take it what it reads.
But if they're saying, if they're saying they've checked the irrigation's working on all the trees, then I assume the soil will be moist anyway.
We'll make sure that it's physically checked.
Thanks.
If I could just, I checked their proposal, it is just seventeen nine seventy-five. The next two years, they say are negotiable, which is their standard contract language, and they always keep it the same.
So where did those figures come from for years two and three?
They were probably picked up off of another proposal. I don't know. Was it Scott's finger and it wasn't my pen that put those numbers there?
The right way for that to read, then, is for the next two years to be blank, is it not?
Right, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, we're moving on to four F.
Yes.
I was rather surprised that four F was a consent agenda item, because it's quite substantial. Let me just double check that I've got this right.
This is an item from Mr. Scott Connell, and with help from Tech Tech. This is a for our information-only item, correct, Scott?
Yes.
I just didn't want it just to be a blankie to prove without, it seems, there's a lot in here.
There's a lot. I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, no, that's fine, go ahead, thank you.
There is a lot in here, you're absolutely right. This is an information item that we are hopefully going to be studying in the next few weeks, and will come back to us. Is it the second, the second meeting in January is what I recall? Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. I just didn't want us to be approving stuff that had a lot of smoking guns in it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes to the minutes, which is four A, and a change to the contracts spreadsheet, which is four C.
One second.
Any other conversation? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Poked? Five, zero. Next item is a business item, talking about the utility billing manager. And this has a lot of conversation on it. Mr. Senior, I know that you have a lot of input into this, but before I turn to you, I would like for our district manager, Cal, would you please bring us up to date on where we are on this utility billing manager?
Well, we received over sixty applications. We broke those down to what we felt were the top nine. We conducted telephone interviews, and then shortlisted those to six. And what we, our plans are moving forward is to interview the top three. We used a grading scale based on responses given, and we think we've got some excellent candidates.
Thank you. You showed me, I think, a timeline that you had in mind, or?
I sent that out attached to the memo yesterday that summarized where we were at, and the timeline was, the schedule was attached to that, and, you know, depending on what happens today, we'll be moving forward with interviews for the week between Christmas and New Year's.
Do you have a board member that is going to sit with you on these interviews?
That was a suggestion or request I made to the chairman, and Ms. Gill offered to be that person.
Thank you. Okay. Rod, you've put a lot of things in here about, now that you've seen or heard the updates from what our manager has done, how would you like to proceed?
Well, before I did proceed, I just want to ask Cal, timelines, then, for selection. You're saying it's early January. What will be your targeted commencement date?
It would depend on the candidate. The three that are, the three that we would be interviewing could all start mid-January.
And does that mean they're currently employed now, and they're going to have to give thirty days notice?
One has to give two weeks, the other two just moved to this area.
Does that mean they're unemployed, then, now?
Yes, they're unemployed now.
Here's my thought, and this is based upon my years in business, management consulting and so on, gone through a lot of this stuff, and typically, in the hiring process, HR, certainly for larger companies, larger than us, typically have an HR firm do the screening, because that's where they're skilled in, specialized in, bring it down to a shortlist, the kind of level that you've done, down to ten or less, and then the shortlist candidates down, you know, the last five, for example, are presented to management, and the management, who are the ones who are going to have to work with them, form their opinions as far as chemistry and culture and stuff like that. But the selection process is typically done by HR specialists, and with due respect, I don't think Scott or yourself are HR specialists, okay? And we did, we have got at our disposal, Joe De Cerbo, who is an HR specialist, is that he actually doesn't just do selection, he teaches it. He goes around doing seminars in it with this targeted selection process, does it for FASD. And typically, these type of people would be hired at a quite price, and Joe is willing to come down and give a second opinion, not to overrule, but to give a second opinion on the last few candidates, and is prepared to come down for an overnight hotel stay and one or the most two days at five hundred dollars a day. And in consideration of the importance of this position to the district, the billing manager, I think we, my recommendation is that we ask Joe to come down, and two heads are better than one, and that's what I'd like to recommend.
You want to make a motion to that effect?
I would like to make the motion that we asked Joe to come down, given that his timeframe has, he's going away January the sixth, so he is willing to come down based upon what I've put in this meeting book. I'd like to make the motion that we asked Joe to come down and give his opinions, yes.
For a second to that motion. Here he is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That is, is second to the motion.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Is there a conversation that we want on the motion that has been seconded?
I respect the work that you've done, and I respect Joe Cerbo, but he actually, at one important time, told us that he was going to extricate himself from the district, that he didn't have the time, or I guess he was having some health issues, and he was going to back away from offering us any more help. I think that listening to our manager, he's already done the work that you're suggesting that Joe come here and do. And we have Melissa, and we have our management company that we've hired to do these things for us, and I'm, I would just really like to let them continue the process. They've already narrowed it down to three really good candidates, Melissa will be a part of that, and I think they can handle this.
It was due to health that Joe, and that's overcome, by the way, now.
Okay.
And so, thank you for your input.
Anything else?
Well, I, you know, respect the work that you've done, but I have thirty years of HR management, owning two headhunting firms, so I think with helping, I think that they are pretty capable of finding a candidate for the office, and I'll help them interview. So I think we'll be fine.
Further? I hear you, I see your lips moving, but I don't see anything coming. I'd just like to ask Pam a question or two. She knows the meaning of pain, just like Joe. You've mentioned this before, your HR thing, but you've never said where, what, why are it? It deserves a better explanation.
Where?
Meaning, let me just finish this. I apologize for the interruption, but Joe De Cerbo has actually had boots on the ground working in a facility like this, the actual online guy, the guy that is responsible, so to speak. And in my thing with that, I simply think that for a cost of maybe a thousand dollars, and maybe not, that this particular position, which has been just exploded into something so terribly important, that that investment is something that just makes an awful lot of sense, even working together with you. Because as much as I think that I could do a hell, I think that that particular zone is one that's rather an unusual niche, and I think that it would still be good unless you find it not possible to work with him, and I'd find that hard for you not to.
I don't find it not possible to work with Joe, I just don't think that it's necessary for us to spend the money when our district has done most of the work. He's, they've already, they've already identified candidates.
I understand, I understand.
I could understand this if they failed at what, that you haven't even, we haven't even given them a chance. We haven't looked at anybody, we have not interviewed anyone, so I kind of think this is jumping the gun and saying, it's basically saying that they're inadequate in doing the job that we have employed them to do. And it's not a rocket scientist, this is not a real specialty position.
I couldn't agree with you more.
So I don't see where it would be advantageous to.
Tell me about your thirty-year career, would you please?
I am not going to give you, I'm not going to sit here.
Well, you made a statement.
Well, I have thirty years, yes.
That's enough, that's enough. But she is not obligated to tell you anything if she doesn't want to.
But I do have government background, and I did work for Job Corps as a director, and I did placement for many years for them, so I understand governmental aspects of hiring someone, in addition to having my own firms in Philadelphia and South Carolina. Thank you.
She wanted to tell us that anyway.
I don't think it's a lack of confidence that I'm coming from. It's not a lack of confidence, it's recognizing that we have an expert here who teaches and who has experience in special districts, where two heads are better than one, because one day, if seven trend to not here, as our district management firm, this individual who we're hiring will be here, and I don't want to make a mistake, because it's on our heads.
I'm calling the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poked? Aye. Motion fails, two to three. Next item I have on my agenda is staff reports. District Council?
Drafted in private, Scott, just today, you talk about the flag football league, the one-year agreement with flag football, and Scott will provide that to Mr. Aronka, that's the one that's effective December first, and I think Scott's already talked to Mr. Aronka about them providing financial statements before December thirty-first.
I have.
I believe, I could be mistaken.
I spoke to.
George?
The other gentleman. The soccer league.
Okay, but the football, flag football had no problem with providing.
No, they had no problem, and I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
And I think Scott is also working, Scott made a report, working with the architectural firm, provided a copy of the proposed contract and discussing rates with the landscape architecture. Scott's been using primarily the template that I prepared earlier for that contract.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Mr. District Engineer, Danny?
I have nothing today.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
District District Manager?
Yes, two things. One is the acceptance of the engagement letter with Burger Tooms, and that was in your packet, and it's just a standard engagement letter at this price that was quoted.
That is?
That's, I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign that letter of engagement.
It's all moved. Second?
We're motioning second to sign the letter of engagement, the board has already authorized. Any conversation? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Poked? Five, zero. Thank you very much.
The other thing that I had, just to give you an update, is that as of this morning, that didn't include anything we received today, we've got thirty-six applicants for the utility manager position, and thirteen of those are candidates that meet the qualifications that we're looking for, that was approved in the job description by the board.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Scott, anything from you?
I'd just like to let you know that two of our staff, one was recertified for our pool certification, and that was Holly, and Secretary Anthony was also certified this week on that, so we had training courses here for them, and that's, they passed and we're moving on.
Thank you. What does that mean? What does that mean?
To operate a commercial pool, the chemical balance, and take care of all the things required by the Health Department.
How about the life-saving aspect?
We went in April, all the staff went through first aid training and through the defibrillator training.
Oh, yeah?
I have my card.
Up here?
I need it there. But, so all the pool staff and all the staff here, heart saver, first aid, CPR, AED training as of four twenty-four.
Do we have a certificate that we can post someplace?
We all got individual cards.
But for the public to see?
We can ask, and this, these were conducted by the.
Even to put on our website?
South Trail Fire Department through Lee Memorial Health Systems. I will contact Kristy Knutson.
It must have some type of template?
Could be.
We could put right on the website?
Could be. Find out. Don't know.
While we're talking about that, do we have a defibrillator on board?
We do not. And I understand from staff.
I think we should definitely make a motion to get a defibrillator on board.
Yeah, well, and part of that, Scott and I've had some discussions, because a few years back, there was a discussion as to whether or not the district wanted to get the AED, the automatic defibrillators. And there's a statutory scheme that's in place that provides certain level of protection or immunity if you follow the statutory scheme, and I believe at that time, no further discussion was held, or it didn't come before the board. If you want to, we can provide a memo to the board the next board, we need to see if the board wishes to acquire AED and what the pluses and minuses are of that. By way of example, there's one of the downsides, there is immunity in the statute, this is just paraphrasing, if you have an AED and if you, an individual trained in it attempts to use it or uses it and unsuccessful, that governmental body, that person is immune from liability for lawsuits. However, in Lee County, there was a situation where they had. lawsuits. However, in Lee County, there was a situation where they had AED available at a field that wasn't used. Lee County tried to use that statute as a defense, and they said, no, the Supreme Court of Florida said the statute's clear. You have to use it or try to use it. You didn't do it, so you're not protected. So that becomes a question, that do you have greater liability by having it and not using it than not having it?
You're going to brief us on all of that after the first meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. But that's the pluses and minuses. That's correct. The first board meeting, I'll have a memo on that.
Are you good? All right, I'm with you. But what else are we going to do? We got to know, we got to know what the rules are.
I'm sorry, I'm the guy that tried to get it before. It was voted out, so yes, we need it.
Absolutely.
Everybody, okay, with Tony doing...
Yes.
Yes, Scott and I have had some conversations, and I brought back some of the materials from back then, and I'll bring them forward.
Supervisor comments. Pam?
I just want to say Merry Christmas, everyone, and thank you for coming out and supporting us. I know that we don't all agree, but we're all, I think, trying to get to the same place, and that's to make this gateway a better place to live. Happy New Years, everybody.
Happy New Year. Thank you. Margaret?
And I'll do Pam's Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, in case you didn't see it in the paper. Gateway is going to be getting a Publix, so we won't have to be playing Frogger across State Road 82 anymore. It'll be at the end of Gateway Boulevard on at Danny's. I was glad to see that.
Deadline for the congestion with the schools.
And it'll be safer to get to.
Right through Gateway Charter.
Yes. Couple of items. Scott, I had a meeting with Ed Frost this week, together with Ivan Vallas, further to his, some complaints out of Silver Lakes, that there's a lot of rubble and debris along Griffin Drive. And I know you've responded. I know you weren't around them Monday because you were away ill, but Ivan and I met them. And I just wanted to make sure, it's on one aspect of this, that's next to Timberwood, there's a lot of concrete debris still lying there, at least there was. And I know that you gave, you had a dialogue with WCI that gave them the okay to put it there for a while. But it seems like the while has gone on. Is there, is there a deadline on this?
Well, first of all, let me correct something. That is WCI's property.
Yes.
Not the district's property.
So what was, to what extent then are we involved? How can we be involved in encouraging that to be cleaned up?
We have encouraged that through our bi-weekly meeting with WCI and their engineer and their contractor, that it needs to be cleaned up. And it's, their third-tier subcontractors need to do it, and they start and they stop, et cetera, et cetera. So we just repeatedly stay after them. It is broken flags of sidewalk from things that they're fixing as part of the road rehab. And we will stay after them to clean it up, and that's the goal. And hopefully, there's another couple of months of work to be done with the road rehab, all the paving and milling and things. So there's going to be asphalt, surplus asphalt, that's going to be deposited, but will be cleaned up. At the end of the day, the area will be re-graded and seed mulched under there. I have gotten calls from WCI themselves, because they're trying to sell real estate at the new development. And they called me, and I said, well, it's part of your people, it's part of FPL, part of CenturyLink, part of Comcast, it's part of our contractor, and it's part of your contractor. We have got, I mean, a majority of them to act and clean that up in the past two weeks.
Yes, you have.
And we said, we want it to stay that way. If you make a mess, you clean it up, just like at home.
Thank you. While you're there, Vista...
But we chose that spot, please.
Yes.
Because it doesn't back up, it's not behind anybody's home. It's not in front of anybody's home. It's accessible, the trucks get in and out, the debris is there, yes, it's untightly. But it's the least interfered area that we can, that we came up with. So that's why it was selected.
Thank you for that. I promised Ed I would follow up on that, so thank you. Vista Logix, can you give us a quick summary? Are we moving forward with Vista Logix? Do I upgrade our web portal?
I can't recall the gentleman's name right now.
Brian Haas.
Brian Haas, he did, just sent something eight days ago, or whatever it was. And to be honest with you, I haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay. Last question is for Cal, and actually for my colleagues on the board. Did we formally agree to replace Ivan Vallas?
No.
Because, because I'm reading, I'm asking that question, it's a simple question that may not be a simple answer. Because I'm reading your email here of December the 16th that says, with regards to the utility manager, we have received 20 applicants. I'm assuming then you've put out an ad.
Yes.
Have we approved that we're actually replacing Ivan Vallas?
Well, you approved a job description, and you created the position within the budget.
I must have been asleep, because I, I'm not certain that we had formally agreed, because there's many different ways to look at this position. Then I wanted to have that debate in the new year, when it comes to organization, that we plan to do further to the job functions that Joe De Servo did, and we're going to review at the end of this calendar year. All this comes together with job definitions and job functions of Scott and Ivan's replacement or Tetra Tech. And I just, I'm reading this email, and I must have been asleep, because I don't think we've formally discussed and approved that we're actually going to replace Ivan Vallas with an employee.
I don't think that was presented that way. There is, it's in the, the position was approved in the budget. And then the job description with changes was presented at the last meeting or the meeting before that, and the board accepted that.
And I think you had wanted to make the cutoff for responses, the 18th, and we said leave it open.
Yeah.
We asked for the change to leave the date to respond open, so that we could make sure we got the best applicant.
We can't let this, can't let this just go open, just because...
Well, remember, let me just say this, Bill, please, that we have, we've been operating since 1986. And we had, and you were on the board, Gary, when Ivan, when...
Eighteen, six, yeah.
When was Ivan hired?
Last year.
No, no, but when was hired by DMS?
Oh, by DMS.
When did Ivan...
It was about two years ago.
Two?
It was about two years ago.
Okay, so Ivan came on the scene in 2013 or '12, or something like that, as a consultant to Brian Lamb, okay? And then all the hoo-ha followed that, we all know what that is. So, but until then, we've never had an onboard engineer. I mean, we hired Ivan because there was an opportunity to hire him. He came out, he came off Lee County as a qualified man. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we grabbed him because he's, he knows Gateway, and he was a good man, Lee County experience. And we created a slot for Ivan. It wasn't that we created a slot and went out looking for somebody to fill it. We actually created a slot because we wanted Ivan onboard. But we've operated all those years without an onboard administrative engineer, public works, wherever you want to define the man as. I'm just asking the question now, and why do we, why is it now desperate that we need to replace him? Is there another way to do this?
Well, there was one other thing that is still in line, but that you didn't mention it, as we were embroiled in the new meters, that transition.
Yes.
And because of Ivan's experience with utilities, he seemed to be a very good match.
Not at the moment, yes.
Exactly so.
I agree with that.
Okay. Additionally, may I add, that it also was in some ways convenient, in that he didn't want a full-time position with all of the other things. He was more of a part-time person without, and that also economically, budgetarily fit as well. So this new position we're talking about is an expansion from that. And I have, after your gun, I've got one other recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, am I on my own here? Is the board in support of actually going out and filling, filling this role? Or are we going to have a discussion about...
We've already, we've already made that decision.
When?
Two meetings ago. The, the job description, I don't, the advertisement, we've got candidates' resumes that we're reviewing.
Yes, we have for the utility, utility billing manager. But I can't remember having that...
I think the discussion was that did that, we needed the position, but did it need to actually be an engineer?
Right, correct.
And so this person doesn't necessarily have to have an engineering degree. We're not making that requirement.
Well, that's not what's in the book, and that was part of my description, too, that the recommendations that I saw from Scott had in parentheses, quote, engineer, quote, engineer, quote, engineer.
The job description specifically says it's a utilities manager at a, not to exceed figure that you're currently paying for a full-time position, salaried position, to manage and your utility system. It doesn't have to be an engineer. It does need to have a degree. And that's the job description that was presented. We changed the job description from what it was to, of a utility director or whatever, to utility manager.
We did have that discussion last meeting. We did. We talked about the title, manager...
Pam, you don't even know what my question is. You don't even know that I'm questioning that. Now can I ask you something without you getting...
No.
I've been down that road before, and I don't care. Having learned of Pam's experience and expertise, I'd like to ask her to actually look at this, to see what you feel is the position that we really need. Meaning, this may have been somewhat of a square peg in a round hole, but it worked for a while. That doesn't mean that now, in the continuation, that it will. And I think with your expertise, if you could take a look at that, I think that that would be pretty superb for you to do.
Are you willing to work with...
Yes.
Okay. In other words, tasking Scott to tell you what he needs and yada, yada, yada?
Mm-hmm.
I.e., you'll be building our workforce and that, or bottom top, whichever way you want to look at it.
Thank you, Pam. Just to finish my point, I had a long meeting with Ivan after he left the district, because I wanted to understand, from a transition point of view, what he thought were the key things that needed to be addressed and the, and the job functions. And it wasn't just utilities. He thinks there's got to be quite a big public works content. Is that part of the job description?
Yes.
Because there's, there's going to be some overlap with you as well, Scott. This is a big subject. We're talking about a really key position. I just didn't want to plow forward without having this, without thinking it through. And I'm glad that Gary and Pam have contributed to this. Thank you.
It's kind of like, we could have called it a public works director also, or position, but it's, it's somebody that oversees the utility system and streets and storm sewer system, all of those things. Answering to Scott, so I don't see it as a position that's in conflict with Scott, but complements Scott's position, giving him time to be more of a manager, as opposed to, you know, hands-on administrator of various different functions.
Well, let me say, I've been in touch with a district CDD as big as ours, and we're one of the bigger ones, as you all know. This is St. Lucy West in Jupiter. I'm getting on well with their district manager very well. And he has sent me his organization chart, which I think is a good guide. And the way they set themselves up, he's the district manager, that's, that's Scott's role. They call him a district manager. He's not employed by the district management firm, which is, this is employed by the district. And I believe that's what Scott's position should. We talked about this in the spring. I'd like to revisit that in the new year, not today. So we have a district manager, and then you have three business lines. You have public works, utilities, and administration. Administration meaning billing and, and executive office administration, that stuff. Okay? And then you've got utilities, public works. Good. But they do have a wastewater treatment plant, so utilities is quite a big deal there. And so, with that being said, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going straight into this thing and narrowing it down and hiring somebody without thinking through the organization. And particularly, I'd like to get into the new year and revisit this concept of our operations manager being employed by this district. Not today, but that's something that's on my agenda for the new year. Thank you.
Did you get that to Pam?
Yeah, by all means. I won't be around on January the 7th, by the way, for the next meetings, out in Canada, so...
You have any...
Yeah, I do.
Please, go ahead. You okay with it? You know who I'm looking at. Don't, don't act like I'm looking at Margaret.
I'm fine.
You okay?
Yes.
So, fine. We actually have somebody that has vested interests, that's a part of us and a part of the team, and she's going to take a new role. And that's good. All right? Having said that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and for all of those people that volunteer their time for any part of the Gateway type of groups, committees, organizations, et cetera, we all want to express our absolute gratitude for all of your time that you spend and dedicate, even though sometimes we don't listen to you. Even though we sometimes don't even ask you why you made the decision that way. In any case, we thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Our next meeting is January 7, 2016. Everyone have a Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Safe for your dear.
And thank you for staying all the way to the end.